You are responsible for the content, even if it was written by somebody else. Please direct all comments to the mayor. The mayor will refer to staff for readily available information or for follow-up as needed. If amatory or libelous comments will not be accepted. Distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members and staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. I have two here. The first one is Ann Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ann Hurd, 623 Southwest Hater Street in Dallas, and I'm president of Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center, and I've got some happy things to report. Whenever I go to the pool, I always talk to the people around me. You'd be surprised how many people don't know anything about Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center. Well, I talked to a woman who just kind of joined, came over from Monmouth a week and a half ago, and told her all about it. Oh, I'm going to donate. She sent a check for $500. And then last Friday or Thursday, I talked to a man who was in the lane next to me. We finished about the same time, and he didn't know anything about it either. And I told him about the things that we purchased, look around, you know, the therapy lift and the banners to raise money and everything. And he said, we've been thinking about doing this. They were also from Monmouth. And he said, my wife's over there in lane one. Go talk to her. Tell her I said we're going to donate. So I went over and met her. Wonderful woman, Cheryl. She worked in marketing and research. She's going to come to our next meeting and give us some fundraising advice. And they sent us a check for $1,000 today. So we're going to make that $15,000 to put those sand filters in really quickly. So we're almost to the first $5,000. Also, I wanted to just tell you about one thing that we did that nobody really knows about. When Eric Totten was managing Parks and Rec, he didn't do it very long, but when he was, he came to us and he said, you know, it would pretty be nice to have a washer and dryer here because the staff takes home the lost and found items and the rags that they use to clean all over the pool every night to wash them. It would be nice if they had a washer and dryer. So we bought a washer and dryer, and I think the electricity and the plumbing costs much more than both washer and dryer, but it's in there. And so they use that every day to wash the cleaning cloths and all the lost and found items. The last thing I wanted to tell you was the first week of September, we cleaned the pool, emptied the pools, and it's just like emptying your bathtub. It goes right down, you know, the sewer. Takes longer to empty it than it does to fill it back up. But the first time they filled the pool after it was built, they used garden hoses. Can you imagine how long it must have taken? Now they use fire hoses. And I talked to the fire chief, and she said that they flush the hydrant out by the pool, and they make sure everything's all clean and everything. And then they have these big fire hoses that are just splashing into the pool to fill them up. And so that takes a couple of days to come up to temperature, but that's how they do it. And so thank you very much. And our fundraising campaign continues. Thank you.
Good job, Ann. Thanks, Ann. Okay, next is Robert Greenway.
First of all, I want to thank Kim for not following the rules again. She pushed the envelope. Evidently, she put her sign out in the right of way for getting reelected and decided to wait at least seven to 10 days instead of moving it right away. So good for her. Main topic today is who is lying? This concerns what I talked about before. Back to my rain garden, who they decided to tear up, and they said it was done as a favor to bring it up to construction standards, written to me twice by the assistant city manager, but they didn't complete the job. As I said, the sidewalk isn't constructed right on the side of the rain garden. It's supposed to be thickened. I got a memo from our city manager that says that when it was originally put in, the forms were inspected. So that would tell me that the forms were put in to make an eight-inch instead of a three-and-a-half-inch buffer or sidewall of the sidewalk. The only problem is it wasn't done because I dug it up, and they should have found that because the dirt was supposed to be four inches below the sidewalk. So if they would have done what they were supposed to do, they would have noticed it also. So now the question is, who is lying? I sent things to Fowler, who's supposed to have done it. So the only reason that could not have been done correctly is before they poured the cement, they would have had to fill it back in. In other words, it sloped down eight inches instead of four inches. So Fowler would have had to fill it back up to the four-inch mark and pour the slab the wrong way. Our city manager doesn't seem to want to check into it, so I'm checking into it. It wasn't done right. You told me, and that was your fault, that said you're going to bring it up to construction standard, so do what you're supposed to do. So if you're not going to do it, then Fowler needs to do it because somebody is lying. Okay? That's just a simple fact, that somebody is lying to what happened there. I sent pictures, and they seem to want to ignore the pictures that shows that it's not eight inches thick, which it's supposed to be. How it got that way? That's between you, the city, and Fowler because you are telling me that the forms were poured or were constructed for an eight-inch. And I'm only bringing this up because you made us think about it. So fix it.
Are there any written content tonight? Anybody on the phones? Thank you. The next thing is consent agenda. Consent agenda is approved September 16, 2024. Work session meeting minutes. Been approved since September 16, 2024. City council meeting minutes.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved to approve. Meeting minutes. All those in favor, signify. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Period unanimously. Next thing is reports or comments from the mayor and council members.
I would like to say something. I attended the Gold Star presentation for the marker that the garden club had presented to the city. Wonderful. Brian has the certificate. If you have a chance, it's down by the old aquatic center where the basketball courts are. It's a beautiful marker memorializing the 6,000 Oregonians who's lost their lives in action here in Oregon. So wonderful ceremony.
I talked about, two weeks ago, about 2251 intersection. And today, there was another accident there. No fatalities, but there was an accident. And two weeks ago, there was another accident there. No fatalities. So since I'm involved with IMWAC, the Mid-Villamondary Commission on Transportation, I'm their chair, been their chair for many years. In 1997, this committee was formed, and we were the first one in the state. We have 17 members representing members of Mammoth, Marion, and Polk County. So we had some ODOT people at our meeting, and I got copies of the itemizer and took it to them and showed them. You don't have to read it now. You look the pictures, but it's serious. So tomorrow night, the City of Independence is having a public meeting, and they've asked me to attend and testify, which I will be doing. One option that is being passed around now is that we would, Oak Grove is that small road that is, kind of makes a triangle between 51 and 22. And ODOT is considering making that a temporary bypass. So when people are coming from Independence going towards Salem and want to turn left to go toward Dallas, they're going to make that an option. And that way, you won't have to be fighting traffic coming from Dallas, going to Salem and turning left and all this stuff. It's still in the works. The project is in the works, and it's a cloverleaf overpass, very, very similar to what we see at Rickroyal. So you'd be able to go from Salem towards Dallas, take the exit to the roundabout, go over the highway and towards Independence. Coming from Independence and want to go toward Dallas, they move or get into that roundabout and turn left going toward Dallas from the coast. So both will work, but it's a time thing, and it's not going to happen very fast because there's no funding. So I have a feeling that there's going to be a lot of people going to Washington, D.C. to try to get money. We've talked to our legislatures, and they're very much interested in getting this thing fixed. So.
How does ODOT, given that they have a finite resource and a list of projects this long, how do they prioritize which ones to do first?
Well, that's one of the things that the Area Commission on Transportation is doing. We are, when I say we at IMWAC, is to advise the Oregon Transportation Commission on the projects. That's how we got the Rickroyal project done. And there's other ones that are happening, going out to St. and that got funded. Woodbury got funded. Parts of the Newburg Dundee is being funded. A lot of bridges got funded. When we, the second year of the OT of money, we got nine bridges redone in Polk County. The one at 11th Street Bridge, when they tore it down, had no footings. It was just sitting there.
What I'm really getting at is, is there anything that the municipalities can do that we're not already doing to light a bigger fire under that?
Well, when there's no money, there's no money.
Well, that's why I asked about prioritizing, maybe bumping things higher on the ladder.
Well, that's a possibility, but just because it's now number one. I can remember back, I'm the lone member of IMWAC when it first started in 97. And I remember talking about it. We prioritized the projects at that time, and Rickroyal or the 2251 interchange was number four on the list.
That was a quarter of a century ago.
Yeah.
Has there been any discussion maybe of slowing the traffic down out there and maybe using some heightened patrols?
It's your bad job. That's another topic because you don't have that much, many officers that can patrol. But that is another way of slowing things down is enforcing the law. And so just be careful when the next time you're going out there, it could be you. I remember I'm driving to Salem one night, and one of our local judges, who's no longer a judge, and he's a friend of mine. I'm doing about 6062, and he's passing me in the left lane. And I smile at him, and he lays back, and I point the speedometer, and he goes, and continues on. So it's enforcing, and I just don't know what else we can do except continue to remind them, remind them, and remind them we need.
I drive that every day in 62. You're going to get ran over.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, you'd have a 72 to stay up with traffic.
My son just got a $267 ticket for 62.
Really?
Awesome.
That was for holding up traffic, right?
Yeah.
It shouldn't have been one of the cops, I know. They wouldn't have even over.
That's a rarity.
That was out here on the highway.
So to answer a little bit more, Councilor Shane, your question, the council will be considering a resolution tonight. It's the same resolution that the City of Independence is considering substantially, the same words that I think they will consider tomorrow night. And that's one of the things that, you know, if the council is in agreement that, we'll get that signed tonight, and we'll be able to carry that tomorrow to that meeting. And I think joining the chorus of, you know, our communities and, you know, even people at the state who know that this is a priority, I mean, as we head to Washington, D.C., and as we head to the state legislature to say, look, this needs to get done. You know, it's not a matter of...
Anything we can do to increase the pressure, we should do.
Right. So.
One thing I would recommend is support the legislatures that have given us money. Support them the best way you can by voting for them because they're going to give us more money, I hope. And everybody's talking about this project now. So hopefully, maybe another 10 or 15, 20 years, but I want to make it safe for my grandchildren.
Sooner it happens, the fewer people are going to die.
Yeah. So it's frustrating, but that's what happened when you ran out of money. So any questions?
I, as you know, I had a long career with the state police, and I went to a lot of fatal crashes before there was a Rickroyal bypass. That was what Highway 51 and 22 is right now. I was from Boston, and I was amazed at how can you make this left-hand turn into traffic that's coming from 22, 18-wheelers and all kinds of stuff like that? And you take your life into your own hands before there was a bypass there. I can't tell you how many fatal crashes that I've been to on Highway 51 and 22. I used to be the Polk County resident trooper, which means I went to every single fatal crash, no matter where they were, in Polk County. By far, that intersection there was corner, cloud corner, 99W were equally as bad. Fast forward, just this past year, I went to a transformative leadership class with a lot of people from the state of Oregon. One gentleman that I met, and probably you know him already, his name is Robert Harrison, and he is in charge of all those projects that come to Polk County. And I just mentioned two intersections, and he says, I know what you're talking about, Carlos. And I told Robert Harrison, every time there's a crash there, especially when there's a fatal crash, he's going to be getting a telephone call from me, and I'm going to be asked, you know, what are you doing? And tomorrow, I'll be on the phone with him again, saying, what are you doing for Polk County?
Thank you. Anything else? That's a tough subject. It's a sad subject, but it's something we need to do. So we may get to the point where we all write letters to whoever, but let's see how things go tomorrow. I doubt if there's going to be a resolution tomorrow, but we got two cities that are very much involved, and I'm sure Monmouth will follow suit, and Polk County will probably do the same thing.
Well, any elected legislature who's been on the job for more than 10 minutes will tell you that letters do count, not so much what they say, but the volume and the number.
Well, let's move on. So no other comments from the council members, reports from city managers and staff.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Woods. So we have two items that are on the agenda, and then I'll discuss one based on public comment tonight. But I'll start with the transfer station presentation. This is on page seven. This is a staff report of your packet. And so recall it, the last work session we had in the second meeting in September, we had the Rehab facility, which is a proposal for a transfer facility and station to be located at the Rickroyal Dairy site, the former Rickroyal Dairy site, a portion of that on the south side of where the pond is. And Polk County Community Development Director, Austin McGwigan, was also here, spoke about this project a little bit. And so through that conversation, there was a lot of questions from the council, good questions, you know, some that were more site-specific. And so walking away from that conversation, I felt it would be good to have further discussion just kind of in general, you know, about transfer stations, you know, what they are, what purpose they serve, you know, how they operate and function, and so, but not looking at the person who's proposing something in our backyard. And so what we did, working with our city recorder, is we found Lane County has a waste management division within their county services, and they're looking at a new transfer facility, I believe, going in down there. And they have other transfer facilities within the county that exist. And so we invited two people from Lane County. First is Angie Marzano. She's the Lane County Waste Reduction Program Manager. And then also Jeff Orlandini, hopefully I got that right, also with Lane County Waste Management. He's the division manager. They're with us tonight on Zoom, so you can see them on the screen when they talk. Hopefully, their faces get bigger because you're hard to see in a small box. But so they're here tonight. I included just a simple, you know, definition, you know, what a transfer station is for reference. I'm sure they'll give us a lot more. We did present some questions to them from the council in advance of the meeting, so hopefully they were able to get those earlier today so they can kind of talk from that, but also just their experience with transfer facilities. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Angie and Jeff.
And we have just Jeff online.
Just Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Yeah. I can't make myself bigger, nor do I want to, so that'll be on you. So thanks for letting me come over. I talked with Angie, and we thought it might be best for, you have a little more experience with their transfer stations. I'm the manager of our division and so supervise the entire division, and we have 15 transfer stations in Lane County, the most of just about any county I'm aware of. And so, yeah, I did get a list of your questions, and I can try to just go big picture, and then maybe folks can ask specifics if they want. I also tried to look over the presentation or the, I don't know if it was a presentation or the packet you had from Rehab, I believe, and what they were aiming to do to kind of get a sense of it. And so that helped a bit as well. So when you talk about transfer stations, most folks think of them as places where commercial haulers go to dump those, usually the, you know, the trucks that pick up your garbage at your curb. They dump at a center, and then they reload that on larger tractor trailers to bring to the landfill. But we in Lane County have what is usually in industry more called like convenience centers, and that's where the public can do drop off as well. My understanding is that it looks like you all, what they're proposing is to do that as well, where you have public drop off and commercial. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, of course, what he presented to us was very conceptual because, you know, it's a long, long, long way from being anything concrete. But yeah, that's essentially what he was talking about.
Yeah. And so it's important because they're two very different things and have different, you know, pros and cons. And so I'd say, you know, the biggest benefit to providing one of those typically is that you have a shorter haul for mini trucks. So you have mini trucks going down a shorter distance and then fewer trucks to take it to landfills. You also seemingly have the ability to not make those haulers choose where they're taking their waste in terms of the landfill, but just use your transfer station. That's typically used in franchise agreements. Some cities, I know as a county, we can't do those in our cities, but some of our cities actually do have franchise agreements where they can dictate where waste goes. And so basically, those haulers do haul directly to land because it's as close as any transfer station for their service area. So that is definitely an advantage, especially if you look at Coffin View, potential short lifespan, and also not, you know, those haulers then in 12, 14, 15 years won't have to scramble to figure this out. They're going to have to do this no matter what for the distance you're looking at going. They're going to have to find a transfer station. If they're getting ahead of it, it seems like a smart idea. I would just address the biggest issues that we find at our transfer stations are really because of public drop offs, which mean that you tend to over-engineer your transfer station because you're trying to accommodate, in our case, you know, the upwards of 700 to 1,000 people that use our busiest transfer station on Saturday, where, you know, for four or five hours on a Saturday, it's as busy as it can get, long lines. The rest of the time, you know, two-thirds of the dump space is being utilized during the week because you've over-engineered it because you're engineering it for the busiest time. With a fully commercial system where the public doesn't use, you don't run into that. They're very efficient. They come in and out. They usually come in and out two, maybe three times a day. So what we witnessed was they'll come in in the morning, they'll come in at the afternoon, and then maybe in the evening. Managing that with your public can be difficult. It looks like the facility they did propose or in the concept is pretty large. Ours look more like what they said were the version one or two. They're really old transfer stations and look like the ones that they showed that were kind of more outdated. But yeah, so that's kind of how ours work. We, you know, we recommend having commercial in one area, seeing all those big trucks with your public. The benefit to one like you look at or they're proposing is that you do have those areas, it looks like, to have different materials go to different places. With a traditional transfer stations, just strictly your material solid waste, municipal solid waste. Right. It's just the garbage that goes into one pit and it leaves. Looks like you'd have options to separate some. And so those were kind of my biggest in terms of traffic, things like that. Again, really, we find traffic to be an issue during the weekends and during the really busy times when a lot of customers trying to use the facility. So you have to have a long entry, you know, try to keep them off the street. But most of the time, we don't find that traffic's a big issue with the usage, you know, just because it's really a contained time. And if it's in the city, you know, most of your traffic's happening during the weekday in terms of for the city, and then on the weekends, you have transfer station traffic, so they tend to end the flow at different times. So I guess that's kind of high level. I don't know if folks want to give it a specific questions?
I've got one. Since you've been doing this a long time and you're doing it on a pretty grand scale, do you have any kind of metrics for the impacts on things like, more on the commercial, less on the retail side, for things like transportation impacts, carbon footprint, that kind of thing?
We do. Off the top of my, you know, we analyze some of that. For example, we allow a couple of our smaller commercial haulers that are out in the Vanneta area to use that transfer station because it makes more sense for them to use that and have us put that one of our tractor trailers. You know, we have trailers out there that they dump right into as opposed to those driving from Vanneta all the way over to Gushen. And we had done a study some years ago that kind of showed what the climate savings would be not having those trucks do that. I think in your case, looking at some of the numbers they were looking at, I do think, you know, their numbers seemed to track pretty good. I think it was something going from 88,000 to 33,000 was the impact, or maybe I have it reversed in terms of 53,000. But that seems about right when you talk about taking those smaller trucks and not having them make that trip and the wear and tear. I would also say, you know, a big value for us too, like out of that Vanneta example, is that those trucks aren't traveling as far, so they can actually service more customers. And sometimes fewer trucks because they're not driving 50 miles around to empty that truck and then get back out to where you're going. And so that's another definite.
Oh, I have a question. Can you talk a little bit about what you do or what common practice is, or maybe even best practice, is to mitigate the environmental impacts of a transfer station?
What, you know, typically think about that, I guess, from maybe an odor and noise, but are you talking about something more permanent in terms of ground soils or things like that?
If you could address both the immediate impacts, like odor, and then the longer-term impacts, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah. So I would say that, you know, as we've looked at having to site a new, very large transfer station, basically only places that we're going to be going are in industrial areas. And so in terms of property values, things like that, you don't see as big of an impact based on where we're going. The biggest environmental issue, I feel, in the beginning, when you're citing just whatever you're displacing. So if you're going to an area that has wetlands or something like that, having to mitigate for that. But these facilities are all, you know, there's, there's leachage is the garbage wall, right? When you have wet garbage and it gets compacted, it leaches that fluid out. That's all mitigated. That's all mitigated, um, you know, their wastewater, you know, there, there isn't exposure to soils. So from an environmental standpoint, they're not really that dangerous. You are really looking at odor even more so than noise. Um, noise is mitigated just because most of the time you're, you're dumping inside of the facility, inside of building. Um, the odor, you know, what we do and is, is relatively common practice. You have a sprinkler system over your waste that, um, brings water down. What do you need to moisten it so you have a dry waste? Um, or, you know, fire suppression. Now you can put it on deodorizer in there as well. And so you can, you can actually purchase all sorts of interesting, um, I won't say flavors, just hopefully we don't taste it. But, you know, bubble gum and things like that. So we'll do that. We have a couple hotels near our largest one, when, when they call to say we can, we can smell the waste. Um, we do that. The other thing you can do is separate out that, the commercial haulers from your public. And the commercial haulers are going to have a very wet, uh, organic, you know, that's your kitchen waste, you know? And that's going to be the really smelly stuff, right? It's, it's wet and it's a lot of organic. Um, and the idea is to get that out of there quickly too. And like I said, they come in droves, they'll come in, in a few waves. Usually fill up the trailer, put the cover on the trailer, you get it out of there. With the public, what we found was the odor went way down when we segregated it from the commercial haulers. Because most of your, um, your folks that are bringing waste to a transfer station from the public are bringing dry waste. And then we actually have dusted shoes, you know, and it's creating more dust. So, you know, um, and that's why we have like the sprinklers, um, going too. So right now we rely on the workers at our transfer station where scraping with our, the, the bottom of what we call the pit, right? At the bottom where the wetness goes. Um, and it could probably be something you deal with here because it looks like a, a pretty big study. There are one where they, um, it depends though. I don't, I couldn't tell if they're, uh, I would recommend if, if it's possible for the volumes is, is having those folks. Usually they dump on a deck, push it right into the trailer. And that's, um, ours is still cool that you dump into an actual concrete pit and then we have to push it down this large pit. And it gets a little stinkier when you have that much waste moving it around that much. So, um, it, it really has mitigated pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
I've got one. Did you experience any price increases for the standard citizen when you made this switch from, uh, not having a transfer station to what you have now? Was there a substantial increase?
Yeah, I can't answer that really well because our transfer stations, we inherited all of them. They, they're very old. Um, what we, you know, so we kind of had the opposite, which I, I think we can tie around to the question where we used to have the haulers come into our biggest transfer station, which was six miles from our landfill. And then we would put in a trailer and drive it six miles. In many cases, they were coming past the landfill to come there. So we actually changed it up and had them all go to the landfill because it was more efficient, um, than having them all go to somewhere that short. And actually we were able to decrease, um, the cost of those haulers. Because we could take out the, the cost that we were essentially having to incur by bringing it out there. I bring that up because I think you're kind of in a different situation where. I do think, I hesitate to say you'll see lower prices because I've, I've not really heard of a lot of waste industries that lowered prices on folks. Um, you'll probably hear that they won't raise them as much, um, if, if they do that. Uh, but, uh, but I can't imagine that's not a cost savings to the hauler. If they're not the ones having to drive all the way out to landfill, now someone's going to have to. So you're going to have a third party, right? Who's going to be your hauler that, you know, has to manage the transfer station, load up those trucks and drive those larger trucks? So it really depends on how cheap that cost can be. And we do that ourselves as an internal county service. And so I don't have any experience with a private company coming in and, you know, kind of promising me something in terms of cost and whether or not that, that lived up to it or not. Um, but it shouldn't go up because, um, you should be saving the money having everybody drive shorter distances on the larger or the smaller trucks. And then, you know, having, um, fewer that make trips to landfill. Uh, you will probably see some substantial increases if you start, you know, transporting to the landfill, far from the Coffin View, of course. Um, but it would be mitigated by fewer, you know, larger trucks.
Could you send us your current rates that you guys are charging for the different sizes of garbage cans?
Yeah, yeah. And, um, that's, that's a, another thing that, you know, everybody kind of does it a little different. Um, we have, uh, so we use scales at our larger transfer stations, which I would, you know, they would want to use it, you're going to have scales of some sort. I would assume for the commercial haulers, we actually use scales for our public as well. Uh, but our smaller transfer stations use a volume rating. So it's actually based on volume. We got away from the cans and the debate of is my can full or not? And, and kind of just went to let's look at volume. But, um, certainly can share that, that, um, be more than happy to, to show how we do that at, at all the transfer stations.
Well, the point you made a moment ago is, is, is the same point that, uh, was presented to us in our, in the conceptual, um, proposal. We heard that the idea that, um, the, uh, the trucks that pick up your trash at your curb will now be traveling a much shorter distance than they were before.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's, you know, certainly true. You know, when we started allowing that smaller hauler to do it, I don't know if they lowered rates. Um, I think they said, we're not going to raise them, so, you know, that, that year, but, uh. It is, it's a big savings, you know, for them for time and gas. I mean, you know, in Lane County, the, uh, for a curbside county customer, the, the landfill tip fee is about 20% of their rate. Um, and about 20% is probably the recycling charge. We say it's free, but it's not. And then the rest of it really is the, the person driving that truck and that truck and the gas, right? So, um, and with gas being as volatile as it is, shorter the distance, the better.
Any other questions?
Um, and, and the last thing I would say is I know we have some neighbors who are, you know, citing the new transfer station and initial costs and actual costs, um, as I'm sure you're aware, you know, like construction projects. It, it, it won't be the price it's quoted, but, um, you know, it really, I think, for use that term, you know, are you locking the volumes was a really good point and you ensure you get the, the waste going there. Um, and then, um, you know, get us prepared for whatever the actual construction costs ends up being, a huge dam of road.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thanks for having me.
Appreciate it. So this is a. Back on, um, appreciate that presentation. And, uh, so we'll continue this conversation. Uh, we'll bring Polk County back, um, and, uh, you know, potentially Rehab as well and just have some further conversations on this. Uh, they're still working with other municipalities as well. So we're, we're still in the, in the game as far as how, you know, the process of how, uh, how this is moving forward. So, um, just further discussion coming forward, but it was good to have them here tonight and get some questions from an outside perspective. Uh, the next topic we have is on page eight, innocent procurement of a 2025 international dump truck. And I'll invite Mr. Gilson, um, to come up, uh, from the Public Works Department and present on that topic.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Gilson, the Special Projects Works Manager for Public Works. Um, what the staff report in front of you is about is we have a, uh, procurement for a dump truck in the CIP this year and it's over 150,000. So that, uh, by city code requires me to bring it in front of you guys to approve that purchase. Um, we do have some shuffling of funds that we have to do to cover it because the CIP originally was, uh, adopted with 150,000 for the dump truck, but it came into just over 180,000. So we're going to shift some funds around from a forklift purchase that we're looking at doing this year as well. Uh, propose that for next year's CIP and then use those funds to cover the, the balance of what the, the dump truck was, was going to be. And the packet has all of the, you know, our by decision form and, uh, the memo for requesting the shifting of funds from the forklift to the, to the dump truck. Um, the, uh, outfit we're looking for, it's, uh, it's an international dump truck, uh, with the custom built body and a snowplow package with it. Uh, it's through Peterson Truck. Uh, they have state pricing agreement, so we can utilize them with, I'll have to do a comparative bid. So all of that data is in the packet. We just need to have approval to make that purchase.
Questions? Yes.
Yeah, two questions. One, um, is this, is this replacing an existing vehicle?
We do have an aging, uh, dump truck that's, we're, we're trying to get to replace and, and upgrade, correct?
And, and second question, um, what effect is it going to have on you postponing the forklift another year?
Uh, it's actually, uh, thanks for asking that. Um, we need to do the dump truck purchase this year because there's going to be, uh, some new regulations coming down through the state that by getting diesel engines in the future, we could pay up to like 10 to 15,000 more. Um, the technologies that we're looking at for, for the forklift aren't changing. What we would need to re, to replace our current forklift, that's still going to be available next year and there won't be any additional cost then.
Well, that's a pretty compelling argument. What I was, what I was getting, it was more what shape is the just in forklifting? Is it going to make it?
It, 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 I mean, we've had it for a long time. Um, uh, it will definitely be on the very beginning half of the, the fiscal year next year when we do replace it. But it does need replacing, but it, we can get by with it.
You can survive, okay.
What's the shape of the dump truck we're replacing?
Um, the shape of the dump truck we're replacing, I mean, it's still being used, actively used, but we, we need to try to get some of these older rolling stocks out, uh, when we can. It's, I believe, I cannot remember what year it is.
What's it worth?
What is it worth? Um, to be honest with you, I don't know. I don't think we've looked at what the surplusing price is on it yet. We've got to try to get something in to replace it, but.
Worth the cost of a new forklift?
Let's see. Well, maybe, but, um, I mean, we, we would have to look at surplusing it out, what type of revenue we could get from it. We also might want to keep it on as a backup truck or so, or whatnot if it's still got, it still has some nice years left in it, but just not one you want to rely on. Um, believe that up to our fleet manager on what he wants to do, if he wants to surplus it out or, or try to keep it as a backup.
This is such a familiar conversation, talking about old rolling stock. Cause we have this conversation with, with April and with Tom and with everybody who's got vehicles.
Exactly.
Yeah, if I can add a little bit to, to Larry's questions, they're great questions. Um, and so I, I know some of these answers because I happened to be on a tour today down at the Public Works shops and we were talking about the dump truck. Um, so right now we have two dump trucks. Both those dump trucks in the winter time act as our snow plows. Um, and this includes a, a snowplow kit that would go onto this dump truck. And so right now, when we, um, when we go out and plow the town, when there's snow, snow and ice, um, we, uh, divide the town in half. We have a north half and a south half divided by the Rickel Creek. Um, having a third dump truck with a snowplow, uh, will enable us to actually respond faster to the neighborhoods. I mean, think of, you know, Bridlewood, it has the hills, um, as you go towards Oakdale Elementary School. That's one that the schools really want us to prioritize so that they can, you know, remain open, um, or just have a late start instead of having a close for the day. Um, being able to have, uh, and we have the staff to be able to put into these, uh, pieces of equipment. So having a third unit, um, is something that we will probably enjoy for the next couple of years. Um, I don't think we're at the point where we want to, uh, surplus the existing dump trucks that we have. We have two different sizes of dump trucks right now. Um, we'll probably be planning on keeping those, um, just add to the inventory. The dump truck that's the oldest is 25 years old. So that's the, the age of the, the dump truck. Um, we have great mechanics and they keep them in good repair. So, uh, there's not a, a, like an immediate need to, to, uh, surplus out one of our dump trucks. Um, and there's actually benefit to just adding to our inventory. So that's what we're really looking at.
Yeah, I noticed the snowplow and the fine print. That also is a compelling argument.
Thank you, Brian. That was my question.
So with that, that's all I have.
Yeah, there's a recommended motion on the bottom of page eight.
I move to approve the procurement of a 2025 international dump truck from Peterson Trucks in, in the amount of 180,000, 180,000, 355.
Second.
And eight cents.
And eight cents. Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would suppose, every gentleman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gilson. Uh, so the third item I'll just talk about real quick came out of the public testimony here tonight. Uh, Mr. Greenway talked about the, the thickened edge and the rain garden. Um, so I want to address the thickened edge sidewalk. Uh, that was an, an issue that he continues to, to raise with city staff. And so, you know, again, as I mentioned at the last meeting, um, when the city, uh, performs inspections on sidewalk pores, we make sure that the proper forms are installed, um, and then that the concrete got poured, right? We don't sit and watch the concrete but get poured. We, but, but we do make sure that the forms are properly placed. And then we go out, you know, the following day after the concrete's been poured to make sure that it's been poured. And so, uh, that's what we did. So as he's, uh, as he brought up, you know, that, well, something had to have changed between when the forms were put in and the concrete was poured, um, that could have been, we don't know. Uh, and so, you know, moving forward, um, you know, we've given the photos that he provided to me, uh, to our, our city county insurance, um, kind of investigative team, they're looking into that issue. So we are working on this to find out, you know, did something happen, um, where there's potentially a claim, you know, from the city against the developer? Uh, so that stuff we're looking into, um, you know, that there's certainly not a need for the city to go out and replace these sidewalks. Um, that's not the responsibility of the city. Um, if there was something that occurred where the sidewalks had to be replaced, that'll be, you know, followed up in a different process. So I don't know, Justin, if you had anything to add to that, but.
No, I, I, I don't see it as being a liability issue for the city.
Brian, I want to thank you so much. I think it's so important that we, uh, we hear from the people who live, work and play here in Dallas. I think that's really important. And it's, it's also important that we can rely on you to kind of fill in the gaps. And I appreciate that. I know that we all appreciate that.
No, no problem.
We're going to give you no dump truck as opposed to.
No, we need, we need that snowplow. Nobody gets the dump, dump truck.
No, thank you. All right, that's all my reports, Mayor.
Next thing is first reading of ordinances, ordinance number 1898.
All right, ordinance 1898 is an ordinance amending Dallas City Code Sections 6.500, 6.505, 6.525 and 6.532, and adding a new, and adding new provisions relating to non-compliant vehicles. So this is a quick staff report. Um, this is, uh, this is an amendment that went through the, the Public Admin Committee. Um, and so right now we have an abandoned vehicle code. Um, and it's very, uh, narrow, narrowly written. And so this kind of broadens the ability for our code services folks who are finding vehicles that don't fit within the abandoned vehicle code, but would fit within a broader definition of like a non-compliant vehicle. Uh, so we, we define that, we provide, um, uh, you know, just a better process and a defined process of how we can address those vehicles in our community. Um, and so that's what this ordinance really is about. So I appreciate the admin committee recommending for the council to, uh, consider the, the ordinance for the council, so.
Yeah, the ordinance number 1898 can pass this first reading. Ordinance 1899.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 1899 is an ordinance changing the zoning designation of a parcel of real property owned by Polk Community Development Corporation from residential low density to residential high density. This is the ordinance affecting the zone change that the council, uh, approved, subject to the adoption of the ordinance at a previous meeting. Um, and is, uh, the property that was, uh, on Henkel Street.
Any questions? Any per ordinance number 1899 to pass this first reading? Resolutions, resolution number 3536.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution 3536 is a resolution in support of continued collaborative efforts to improve the safety of the Highway 22 and Highway 51 intersection. This was discussed earlier tonight by Mayor Woods during the council and Mayor comments.
Any questions? Well, I was calling to resolution number 3536 to pass this first reading.
Not a, not an ordinance. So this is just a vote, a roll call vote.
Yeah, this is. I mean, what does this do? It just sends a signal? What's a res, what's this resolution mean?
So this resolution is, uh, just kind of a, 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 a su- support statement from the council to say, you know, this intersection is dangerous. Um, we, we recognize that. We know that for our community, um, and to, to enhance safety, that this intersection needs improvements. And we support the collaboration with, you know, the state agencies, the cities, the county to make something happen here. Um, and that we want that to happen now, right?
And presumably.
Not 30 years from now.
Presumably this will be part of the ammunition that's taken to tomorrow night's meeting.
Correct.
I think my favorite part of this is in section two, that what we're wanting is something that's aggressive, cooperative and explore and definitely implement something. That's my favorite part of the whole thing.
Maybe we should have negotiated something with ODOT for their easements that they want in the city of Dallas.
Yeah, there is, there's a lot of negotiation opportunities with ODOT.
I thought about that. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify what message this would send.
Yeah, no more discussion. Then I'll have a secretary call.
Counselor Burden?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Berantos?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jants?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is resolution thirty-five thirty-seven.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution uh approving and authorizing the city manager to execute two permanent easements in favor of the State of Oregon Department of Transportation. And so these easements um relate specifically to the ADA compliance work that they're doing at the intersections um in all the communities, but here in Dallas as well. Um allowing uh the ADA ramps to be improved to meet uh the ADA standards. And so they need some easements for the work that they're doing to accomplish that.
Can you explain that in a little bit more detail on just why why the work can't just be done? Why an actual easement is needed to facilitate making it making it happen?
Because the the work has to extend outside of their right-of-way.
Oh, gotcha. Say no more.
They've taken years to decide on the interchange of fifty-one. Maybe we should discuss this over the next few months before we vote on it.
Well, that was Kim's point a minute ago, yeah.
I'm on board with that.
We'll get back to it when.
Yeah, let's get back to them.
Don't have fun.
I seriously mean it.
Any more discussion?
Well, it's more in play here than just the desire to get ODOT off for time because you've got the ADA issues and the accessibility issues. I I figured that, but I just thought I'd put it out there.
Does it not say that there's uh they're just improving it or are they putting in new ADA?
So they'll they'll take out the existing uh, you know, corners uh that are there and they will put in new ADA ramps that are compliant with that.
They're just.
They're compliant ramps. The ones that are there are not compliant. They're not. And we heard from a mom who recently that they they don't work, right? So while it, you know, it would be nice for us to be able to. It would be nice for us to be able to say, look, this isn't working. And we have people that are literally dying because you're not doing your job here. We can't, we can't punish others by not doing this over here. Um there's got to be another way.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm conceptually on board with both of you, but I think this is the lesser evil in the two.
I do see there's fees involved. Can we talk about maybe increasing those fees? Aren't there fees involved that ODOT has to pay to for us to allow that?
Seven hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah, that's that's a pretty good deal. Maybe we should talk about increasing that by a couple hundred million. Whatever that interchange costs.
How much does the interchange cost?
I mean, you know.
Well, that that leads to the response of we don't have enough money to do it now and you want even more from us, so.
Yeah, this gets a little deeper than that. About ten years ago, the feds came through Oregon and said you, all of your handicap accessibility is not code. They're all illegal, so you have to redo them. And this came to through IMWAC as well. We said, why do we have to pay for these and take away money for improvements on state highways? And they said, well, it didn't meet the code and apparently gave the state the wrong code. Or somehow they got their own code. And so now we have to go through it. And that's why, if you remember, the interstate, the corners of Church and Mill Street, we stopped the improvements in the middle of the block, or made going west because we didn't want to have to go through the hassle of redoing the handicap accessibility on Church Street.
Wow.
And that happened on other streets as well.
And that's kind of, I mean, like my point is that they have to upgrade these handicap accessible ramps and whatnot. So if they have to, they're kind of between a rock and a hard place. So we we, you know, like it kind of.
It's not that they have to, it's we have to. That's the bad part.
Where do you think Dallas or is ODOT paying for it?
ODOT's paying for it. ODOT's doing it. It's it's ramps are within their right-of-way um that are within the city limits. And so it's happening within our community. But this is a this is a settlement agreement between, you know, a court case that results in these ramps having to be done. It's not our project. It's it's on streets that are inside the city limits of Dallas on ODOT right-of-way, so they're coming in and doing these ramps. Um and so again, the the two ramps we're talking about are at the corner of uh Washington and Church Street. So that's by Tim's Auto where the new sidewalks were installed there. So that's the one ramp. The other is uh up off of Polk Station Road and Kings Valley Highway. Um and so there's some stuff up there that's gonna be done. Um I'm I'm sympathetic to what we're saying as far as, hey, you know, we have this twenty-two fifty-one interchange that's been a real problem. Um, you know, we could certainly go back to them and say, hey, seven hundred and fifty dollars for what we're giving you isn't enough. We're not gonna get a million dollars from them, right? That's just, you know, not there. But we could say, hey, you know, we think the the value of this is is more than it should be and we want to make a little bit of a a message. So, you know, pay us a couple thousand dollars. I think you might be able to do something like that and and maybe get some traction. But um, you know, it's really what the council wants to do.
Well, we're granting them an easement for, where's the seven fifty? I see a thousand. Is that another charge of this?
Uh Tom, do you want to come speak to the cost of these? Thanks.
Hello again. Um so there's two easements involved. And one is, one, there's about a thousand dollars for one of the easements and seven hundred and fifty for the other.
Why are they different?
Uh square footage of the easement. So and then and didn't want to correct, but Brian, um the the two intersections, it's uh Washington and Jefferson. So right here by the, yeah, by William Valley Fiber. That one we're talking about, I think it was about a foot and a half by like six feet long or seven feet long. I mean, it's not a very big section um for that one. And then the other one is the northeast corner of Polk Station and Kings Valley Highway because it's that really sharp angle. In order to build the ramp there, they needed, it wasn't very much, it's like a hundred and fifty square feet or a hundred. Um and it's just, this is just for the the way they have to construct these to meet the new ADA code is they have the the ramps have to be a certain slope and they have to go to a landing and the landings have to be a certain size. So everything is growing to the point where it's growing outside. I mean, they really could, if we want to stick in the mud, they could do bowl bouts and push them out into the streets. But then everyone complains about bowl bouts and stuff. I mean, it's a ten million dollar project that ODOT's putting the entire bill for. Um this is phase one of the project and it's going from um basically Rickroyal. So ninety-nine at Rickroyal, this project includes ramps there um by that market and the Coffee Cabana, stuff at that light. They're coming all the way down Kings Valley Highway. Um well, that section, Kings Valley Highway, and also North Kings Valley Highway, so they're picking up stuff on the other side of Walmart. They're coming all the way through town, doing all of their uh ramps through our community. And right now, this phase one is they're doing everything that doesn't involve like maybe utility relocates or adjustments or stuff like that, the easy fix ones. They're gonna pick up all of these and then they'll come through again. So we might have a couple more easements that pop up when they do phase two. But this phase one is, these are the two that they've identified.
Is there a standard way of calculating the cost of an easement?
I mean, I'm sure thi- this all came through their real estate uh branch. So they they would calculate how many square feet is needed for the easement and then it's X dollars per square foot.
So we're letting them tell us how much they're gonna pay us for it?
I mean, we, you're suggesting we go out and get sixty-four square feet appraised? I mean, we probably have the right to do that, but then um, you know, it just prolongs the whole process. And I don't think it's gonna come back to where we're gonna get thousands and thousands of dollars for a little wedge of of down here, it's sidewalk that's up against a building. And then out in Polk Station, it's just grass, so.
Mayor, did I understand correctly that ODOT is doing this not particularly because they want to, but they because they've been ordered to? You made you made reference to a court case, I think.
So so I did.
Oh, it was you. Sorry.
Yes, and so there was there was a settlement between ODOT and and the defendants or plaintiffs on this case. Um and it was that they go through the state of Oregon and bring all their their ADA ramps throughout the state into compliance.
So what they're doing essentially is complying with the court order.
Correct.
Okay.
Federal?
I can't remember the where the case was, but this has been going on for many years.
Give me.
So I'm really thinking two things. One, as the daughter of someone who's fully disabled, court order or not, this is a project that needs to be done and should be done. They're paying for the entire thing. Two, it seems really stupid to me to nitpick over sixty-four square feet and try to jerk someone more for something we know is the right thing to do. Because we want to work collaboratively and there are times we need the state to not go, remember those jerks that wanted an extra forty bucks? You know, I mean, come on, I I just, we're not seeing forest for the trees. Let's do the right.
So is the is the handicap section that this lady talked about a couple weeks ago, what is going to be fixed or no?
That's at the high school.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna piggyback on that momentarily because fundamentally, I agree with you. Because one of the things we can say to ODOT is, look, we're cooperating, we're being helpful, we're working with you on this. How about a little, you know?
Well, that's what I was saying. I wasn't saying forty dollars, sixty square feet of of land.
Yeah, we're meeting you halfway. How about you try and meet us a little more?
Open their eyes about our twenty-two fifty-one problem.
You know, it's the old thing about catching more flies with sugar than vinegar.
I mean, nobody cares about forty dollars.
Plus, Debbie said it's the right thing to do.
I would add too that there there have been multiple easements required by ODOT. We're not the only people, so do we want to be the ones that are the stick in the mud when all the other people granted ODOT de-easements?
Oh, we're something minor, is what I'm saying. If it was a major thing that, you know, we actually had a lot of evidence in our favor where we could push back, but this, it seems like we have an awful tiny bit to offer and we're gonna be demanding, it just sounds like bad.
Well, I think we I think we can carry the message of, hey, you know, we're working with you. You gotta work with us um without having to, you know, uh hold up easements or other things like that, right?
Yeah, we want something fixed that's that's gonna save lives.
Right.
So it's not the time to be, you know, obstructionist.
Any more discussion? The secretary call roll, please.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Berantos?
Yes.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Counselor Collins?
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Jants?
Yes.
Counselor Shane?
Yes.
Counselor Burden?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Anything else we want to talk about? You wasted most of your dinner. I do appreciate you talking about salt when I haven't had dinner yet, so.
All you could do is ask.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody, for adjourned.